Welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Hartford Common Council. We have, well, I will let the attendance be taken by our wonderful city clerk. I'd like to call this immediate order and ask if you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is applied to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no doubt of the injustice for all.
And now we go, roll call, Shanna.
The mayor and all alderpersons are present, except Alderperson Kohler and Alderperson Webb, who are absent and excused.
Thank you very much. We have before us a unanimous consent agenda.
Move for approval?
Move for approval by President Rosniak, second by Alderperson Curly.
Motion by Alderperson Rosniak, seconded by Alderperson Curly, approving the common council minutes of August 27th, 2024.
Thank you. Any comments, questions, concerns, or corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose no. Motion carried. Thank you. Communication, Shanna.
So we have a few things tonight. The first thing is there is a Mid-Marin Legislative Committee meeting on September 11th, 2024, at 7:00 PM at the Jackson Municipal Building. I did email out an agenda to everyone, so if you'd like another copy, let me know. Second, there's a Mid-Marin Dinner Meeting that will be held by the city, by us, on September 25th, 2024, at the Chandelier Ballroom. I ask that you please RSVP to me, if you haven't done so already, by September 18th. So I don't know if anyone wants to RSVP right now. Okay.
Would encourage, because it's local, anybody to go. The city does pick up the tab for that meeting, so if you're going to be here on the 25th, you can raise your hand now or check with your calendar and come back. It's always good to have a large contingent from the host city. Okay, thank you. Please.
Next, we have transient merchant licenses for Everlite Solar to go door-to-door selling solar panels. Their representative is appearing via Zoom tonight.
Okay. I think I see him in a very small thing. Is there a way we can transfer it to the other screen so we can... Who's running the video? Just curious if we could take that little...
Jack's here.
Jack, if you could take that little sub-screen and move it either completely obliterate the dais here and put our transient merchant licensee up, or is that not possible? Thank you, Steve. So any jokes at the barber shop, Lee?
Nothing we want to, uh...
Well, I appreciate your candor. Thank you very much. That's okay. Well, there we go then. Can we check the audio?
Hey there, can you guys hear me?
Yes, wonderful, thank you. If you could just state your name, your address, and what you're applying for as regards to the license, that would be wonderful.
Absolutely. So my name is Derek Brolington. My home address is 7516 North 107th Street in Menominee Falls. I am the Sales Development Representative, Team Lead for us in Milwaukee, and we're just applying for transient merchant permits so we can go and knock on people's doors and tell them about the local net metering program.
Wonderful, thank you. Questions for folks? I don't hear any. Shanna?
So you'll be able to pick up those licenses tomorrow afternoon at the clerk's office, which is where they were dropped off and completed.
Absolutely. Thank you.
You bet. So you do have to stay for the rest of the meeting if you want to get your license? Okay, thank you very much. And item D.
So we have another transient merchant license for Steaks and Cakes LLC food truck. So they will be selling cheesecake sandwiches, cheesecake by the slice, single-serve chips, and pre-bottled beverages.
Wonderful. Just state your name and address.
I'm Megan Carnes.
Okay, I just heard it go up. Go ahead.
Reside at 821 Devonshire Lane in West Bend.
Wonderful. Tell us just a little bit about your business.
Uh, so we do a food truck, and we are looking to come in for festivals and small events held within the city to serve food, get all the yummies out.
Yeah, to serve cheesecake.
Cheese steak and cheesecake.
Okay. Super. Well, thank you very much.
So tomorrow, you can pick up the license at the city administration desk afternoon.
Wonderful. Okay, at this time, we have appearances and citizen comments. Any person from the City of Hartford or who has a business in the City of Hartford is welcome to come up to our podium, state your name and address, and you get three glorious minutes to address the city council. Second request. Third request. Going on to the mayor's report and seeing I've been begging everybody for brevity with the debate coming on, we will get all our business done in the necessary time, but I don't have anything for the mayor's report, so we go to automatic requests. President Rosniak.
Two requests. Shanna, we've had a lot of inquiries about early voting. Can you announce when early voting will begin and what kind of hours you're going to have?
So yes, early voting is going to start Tuesday, October 22nd, 2024, and it runs through November 2nd, 2024. Tuesdays and Thursdays, both weeks, we will be open from 7:30 to 7:00 PM. Wednesdays, Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, we will be open from 7:30 AM to 4:15 PM, aside from the last Friday, which will be November 1st. Then we will be open from 7:30 AM to 5:00 PM. And all early voting takes place at the city clerk slash administration window.
Very good. That's a nice selection of hours.
Saturday?
Yep.
Did you mention hours on Saturday? I apologize, I didn't.
Yeah. Oh, did I? Okay, sorry. Both Saturdays, we will be open from 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM, again, at the city clerk desk.
Thank you.
Second item I have.
How many Saturdays, you say?
Both Saturdays. There's two Saturdays during that timeframe.
Okay, so all the Saturdays.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Yes, please.
Item, next Wednesday night, the Business Improvement District is having their annual dinner meeting at the Shower Center. If anybody's interested, go on, talk to me after the meeting. We have to turn in numbers tomorrow.
Okay. Super, thank you very much. Alderperson Reagan.
Just to reiterate, one thing that was mentioned earlier, the Mid-Marin Dinner Meeting is going to be held by the City of Hartford on September 25th, and I would encourage as many of you to attend as possible.
Thank you very much.
I'll go first.
Alderperson Curly.
Congratulations to all involved at the Hartford Explorer Cadet Program, who participated successfully at the Appleton Police Explorer Competition. Hats off to all those who participated in the Copper Roof Fundraiser for the Special Olympics here in Hartford. Chief McFarland reports that Hartford raised around $2,200 and placed third statewide. Finally, thanks to all Hartford Citizen Police Academy Alumni Association members, the Hartford Police Department, the Hartford Conservation Club, Steve Volker, the sponsors and volunteers, donators of raffle prizes, and all participants at the first annual Shoot for a Cause fundraiser to benefit the K-9 Flash and tactical equipment for the police department held this past Saturday. Good crowd. And Steve, when are they having the drawings for all of the raffle prizes? We've been waiting for a call.
They already did that.
Oh, they did. So we shouldn't wait?
You didn't win.
I didn't. Hold your breath.
Okay. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
You got the same chance of me winning the lottery tonight.
There you go. That's okay, I'm going to win the lottery. Okay. Alderperson Garza.
I have nothing tonight.
Alderperson Turchi.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Alderperson Savage.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Alderperson Fulham.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
And the mayor, I'm sure you would like to announce about where you're going to be tomorrow night?
Where I'm going to be?
At 7:00 at Burnt Park for the 9/11 service?
Oh, absolutely. I was going to keep it a secret. I draw too much of a crowd. Yes, that is correct. It is on my calendar, so please be there, be square. We do have a 9/11 memorial right by the fire station in Burnt Park. I would sincerely encourage the citizenry to come there at 7:00. It's a wonderful little remembrance, and it doesn't take very long. I mean, you're...
20 minutes?
Yeah, about 20 minutes. We've had it for a number of years since the statue that were put up or the memorial plaque was put up, and a wonderful thing to reflect on when you realize the resilience of the United States when it came to being attacked. So would encourage everybody to be there. Thank you very much, and of course, Steve and I will both be there, I believe.
You both will be there.
Yes, we will.
I'm not going to be speaking, but I understand you have been invited to speak.
Yeah, I always have a few words.
Despite that.
Despite that. Okay, standing committee reports, finance and personnel, and that would be...
One item tonight, discussion and consideration of approval of the full-service retail outlet application to Aspen Sky.
Shanna?
So this is similar to a picnic license. Basically, the state has adopted new alcohol provisions in Chapter 125 that will become effective over the next two years, and one of the changes is to allow full-service retail outlets for breweries, wineries, and distillers, so Aspen Sky. And Ian is in the process of updating the code to address these and other changes, and this application would be to allow Aspen Sky to serve wine at the upcoming Harvest Festival, which is being presented by the Hartford Chamber of Commerce. Like I said earlier, it's equivalent of a temporary Class B license and only allows Aspen Sky to serve at the specified event. Because the city standards are still in progress, the city has to approve this application. However, future applications will be reviewed under the revised ordinances.
So this is a one-day situation for the fall festival in October, and Aspen Sky comes out a slinger, they're very reputable, so even though it's a new type of license, it's same old, same old.
Yes.
We used to call it a picnic license years ago.
Yes.
Questions or comments? If not, back to you, Mayor.
Picnic license?
Yeah, years ago. Sure. St. Killian's always got a picnic license.
Dennis Heggie would have brought up. I didn't think you would know that about.
I'm a clone of Dennis Heggie.
Oh, my gosh. Something I'm amazed you admitted. Okay, we don't have anything for public works or utilities, so we go to resol...
We got to vote on the...
Oh, we want to...
The license.
Oh, you'd like to vote on the license?
We should get a motion in a second.
I... You didn't say the "back to you, Mayor," so it kind of cost me.
I did say "back to him, Mayor." Never mind.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by Alderperson Turchi, seconded by Alderperson Savage.
Motion by Alderperson Turchi, seconded by Alderperson Savage, approving the full-service retail outlet application for Aspen Sky for the Harvest Festival on October 12th.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose no. Motion carried. Thank you very much. We're up to item number 10, resolution to possible action thereon. Resolution 3692, a resolution levying special assessments for unpaid Hartford utility accounts, Business Improvement District assessments, and assessments for special services on the 2024 tax roll. And with that, we go to our city administrator, Steve Volker.
Actually, I'll have Shanna cover that one.
Shanna, wonderful. What a good job.
So this is a yearly resolution, and basically what we're doing is replacing unpaid utilities, unpaid bid assessments, and unpaid services invoice upon the property tax bill. This is authorized under WISSTAT 66.0703, 66.0809, and 66.1109. This allows the Finance Department to notify the property owners of these unpaid items and of the city's intention to recover its costs through the property tax system, and it provides an appropriate grace period during which payments will be accepted, thereby preventing placement upon the tax roll.
Thank you very much. And any comments? Steve, is that pretty much the complete staff report then?
Hmm.
Okay, I would imagine you're recommending moving this forward then, and with that recommendation, Alderperson Turchi.
Motion to approve.
Second, Alderperson Curly.
Motion by Alderperson Turchi, seconded by Alderperson Curly, for the adoption of proposed resolution number 3692.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose no. Motion carried. Thank you. And with that, we skip ordinances, of which we have no first or second readings, and we go to our city administrator, Steve Volker, for our first swipe at the 2025 through 2029 capital improvement program budget. And I wanted to thank the number of... For one, thank you very much. I do like it printed out. You guys did a great job, so thank you. And also, thank those of you who brought it. It does come in very handy to have the copy with you. Go ahead, please.
So again, tonight, what we're doing is reviewing and taking action, expected action, on the CIP budget for 2025 through 2029. When we look at the next five years, we've talked about in my executive summary, which I sent out to you yesterday morning, in the odd years in which we're going into 2025, we basically are following the direction of the 2024 budget, in which we said in two years, we're going to do this many projects, and then borrow the funds in those even years to do the projects for the next two years. And then additional borrowing would be in '26 and '28. So next year, we're looking to do about $6.2 million in projects, of which $2.6 million, almost $2.7 million, is covered under general obligation debt, which was taken out in early 2024. All the projects which are under general obligation debt will be covered by the existing money that we already have in hand, so that's the good news. We do have a couple of changes from the original 2024 budget, which was removal of one street project because it had too much cost on one of the utilities, and so we removed that but then added Sixth Street onto the project list, so we'll have Fifth and Sixth from East Wisconsin to Union Street. These are total reconstruction projects, so that includes all the utilities underneath, curb and gutter, sidewalk, terrace, and of course, the road. Along with that, you have two dump trucks, you have the fire station garage roof replacement, also the engineering for the satellite fire station. As I mentioned in my executive summary, we are already starting to do... We went out for RFP last week on the engineering for the fire station. Once we get those back, we will... We actually have a meeting on that tomorrow with any of the interested parties that will be bidding on it. This is for the engineering design only. Once we get those back, we will go forward to the Fire and Police Commission and then to the council to approve the final contract on the engineer design, and then we will award that. They will start the design in 2024, it can be completed by 2025. Then we'll go out, using those designs, we'll go out for a bid for actual construction in about third quarter of 2025, and then actually it'll be the second quarter of 2025 for start construction in 2025, and then be completed by no later than the third quarter of 2026, so anticipate about a one-year project.
Do we know how many engineering firms are bidding on this? We don't just have one?
Well, we know that we sent out, that we directly sent out the request for proposal to five different companies.
Okay.
These are five companies that are well-known to do projects of this sort, so fire station, public buildings, things like that.
So we're anticipating more than one response, is what?
Oh, we... We would love to see all five of them, but one of the things, again, we reviewed a couple of options. One is an RFP for design and for construction management. That is different than what we're asking for. We're just asking for design. So that might kick some of them out, one or two of them out, but the majority of them should be completely fine with bidding on just design itself. That doesn't mean that in the future, that if they design it, that they couldn't bid on the construction and then have construction management, but again, we'll see what we get out of it, so.
Okay, sounds great.
Steve, your number in here on engineering and design is a quarter of a million dollars.
Yeah.
That seems excessive.
Um, for a project...
Quarter of a million?
Yeah, for a project like this, when we did a... Well, I shouldn't say, we didn't actually act upon it, but about a year ago, we were approached by several of these companies who said, hey, I heard you're looking at doing a second house. I heard you bought property for a second house. We would love to work on that, and we got some just rough estimates as to what they were paying or what they're getting paid to do engineer for other projects, and that came in about what the price was for total design.
Let's hope it comes out lower than this.
Well, we always hope it comes in lower, yeah.
Even the fire station, $2.4 million sounds normal.
Yeah.
And, you know, it might be more and might be less, but, you know, you're projecting 2.4. So that seems in line, but a quarter of a million for engineering and design just seems high.
We always think, we always think with engineering, it's about 10% of total project cost. So 250 for a 2.5, 2.6?
Okay. Might work.
We should have been engineers.
I should have been an engineer.
Any other questions? Let me move on to the rest of the CIP budget. Again, in my executive summary, I talked about some of the normal things that we do every year, including stormwater maintenance, seal coating, and asphalt patching. We've got sidewalk repair and replacement. Again, we're adding a dump truck, plow, and wing. As we mentioned in '24, we had budgeted for one and '25, another one. We have yet to get the '24 one. We understand that the engine's ready to go. Now we got to get the rest of the pieces put together. So we're hoping to have that hopefully by snowfall this year. Again, we ordered that probably nine months ago. We also have a one-ton dump truck. The... Another big project is the alley repair on East Jackson Street behind the mine shaft and behind there. That's actually a two-pronged approach. Not only are we going to be redoing the alleyway, and primarily because we're doing that because of the need to redo the stormwater underneath it, okay? So we have a stormwater pipe underneath there that we need to replace, so do the entire alleyway. While we're doing that, the electric utilities are also going to be burying all the electrical lines behind that. I know that was a project that the mayor was very interested in. That project itself actually starts over by the post office and goes all the way across under the water and then back to that alleyway, so that will be a 2025 project. We talked about Fifth and Sixth Reconstruction. We, again, are looking at doing some work on the North Main Street reconstruction, leading out to the Copper Trails subdivision, which we are, again, working through right now with Planning Commission, things like that. The Whacker Drive, MSID funds. This is a project, we were granted funding to do it. We only had to pay for a portion of all the costs. $465,000 is our portion of redoing all that road. The City Hall retaining wall project, this is new. We had the study done on the retaining wall. It's just outside this door, and it is failing. If anyone wants to take a walk alongside there, you'll realize why it's failing. Two other projects that we also, when we did the review of the Rubicon River Walkway, you also will notice that across the street, right across from, right across the river from Brut Omen, the retaining wall slash the concrete barrier wall, where we have a railing along that, that is also leaning in. That would be a project that we would look to do in the near future. And then also, the other project is actually putting in a protective shell on the inside of the culvert that goes underneath Main Street, a very old culvert that needs definite repair. That's all stone, by the way. It is not a metal-lined culvert, and the stone over time, and all the traffic on Main Street, truck traffic and everything else, has started to work its way, some of the stones out of there. So that's another one, big, big project that we're looking to do. The Shower Drive roadway extension for the new development is in there. You see the $275,000 for that. We do have, again, a placeholder in there. If the HADC industrial park land does get developed, does get an offer to be developed, Phase 1 of that would be the road that connects that land or goes through that land, $2.1 million on that. That's considered TID number 12 if developed.
Steve, can you elaborate on how that works and, like, borrowing for that and how the TID's connected and all that fun stuff for us? Again, remind us?
So, again, we're not looking to put the road in unless a development comes. A development, we would then create a TID that we could capture the increment or the increased value of that property to pay us back for the road that would be put in there. So if we have an industrial property or industrial business that comes in there, and their taxes basically would be held back and would be used to pay off the road, which made it possible for the industrial business to go in there. Same thing would happen if, no matter what we put in there, if we did residential, we put a industrial, we put a commercial, whatever it would be. The concept is to create the TID so that, again, we pay ourselves back for that development.
Thank you, Steve.
Yeah, you're welcome. The rest of this, again, we got two building projects with the library. We also have... Trying to think what else is new or different. Primarily, that is it. So that's primarily for 2025. Again, as you see in 2026, very... Or 2026, very few things have changed from the '24 budget. The, again, in the '26 project, the biggest issue there will be the $2.4 million for the new firehouse. Any questions about the five-year budget? Alderperson Garza.
Yeah, just, I noticed that in the police capital improvement, that the next vehicle we purchased 2025 is going to be gas and electric hybrid. Just wondering if...
We're no longer doing the hybrid cars.
The what?
The hybrid cars, I think, were taken out, were they not?
No, not according to my paperwork. It was a gas...
Well, they're going to be taken out the way it sounds.
It sounds like they're going to be taken out.
If it states that they're hybrid, that is incorrect because we switched that back out to total gasoline. The hybrids, we were not able to obtain at the price which originally was quoted.
Okay.
Alderperson Turchi.
Um, I have a request. 2026, under parks, there's $40,000 allotted for the finishing of Homestead Park. I'd like that to be moved up to 2025. It continues to get pushed out, and new things get to be added, so I'd like that request to go into 2025.
I would def... I will definitely forward that to... And if the money is available, I don't see why not.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Would you want that put in as an amendment? So if you're looking for this to be moved, that that would be... Because that would lock it in.
That would lock it in.
Then I propose an amendment to lock it in. If Steve's okay with that.
I mean, if, as long as the money is available in the...
Yeah. It's $40,000. I'm sure we can find a way.
Well, the key part to that is it'd have to be a part of the park impact fees, and so I would just have to make sure, because the park impact fees were relatively drained with Centennial Park. So if, what I'm saying is, I would say that's contingent, we would amend the budget contingent on the fact that there's going to be funds available in the park impact fees.
Okay.
It's your amendment. You good with that?
I mean, as long as it gets done. I mean, Steve, it sounds like he's found a way to do it, so. Right, Steve? You've told us how you're going to make it happen, right? As long as you can find it, then it sounds like you can find it.
Yeah, again, it would have to be, it would have to be park impact fees, and again, if we have them, if we do have that amount of park impact fees, we would definitely...
What's the likelihood that you have it?
I, to be quite honest, I have no idea. However, if you open up your audit, which you don't have, but your last audit told you how much money we had in park impact fees. But anyways, I'd have to take a look at where we're at with that, with the park impact fees. But I will... Yes, Alderperson Curly.
Steve, after the extensive investigation that we've done over the lighting at Woodlawn Park...
is there any money in the budget that could be moved into two thousand twenty-five for additional lighting if it's warranted in the, in the park? Specifically around the area where the city band does their concerts on Wednesday nights?
I, I can have them review what the options are, and I can have them bring it back. On both of these cases, what we can do is we can approve the budget as is and then amend the budget in the coming meetings. If, again, we're able to find out that we have the park impact fees to, to add also the, the additional lighting.
Thank you much.
So you're saying that once this is moved and approved, that it can be-
Amended. We, we amend the budget all the time, right? So, I mean, and plus, we have plenty of time before the, before the end of the year. So we can definitely amend that. I just need some time to do the research to make sure that the money is available.
I think that's reasonable, right?
So you're not actually then asking for an amendment to be voted on, then? You're, he's just putting this down, and we would have a chance to amend it in later time?
You're, you're basically asking us to investigate to see if an amendment can be made to the, to the approved budget to move up the, what's the name of the park again?
Homestead Park.
Homestead.
And get some light-
I was gonna use of the Jeff Turchi Memorial Park. We would, we would use that for, to, to, again, push that project up.
I think that's, I think that's reasonable on both sides, right?
And most likely, this will be done by our next meeting. The research.
Well, yeah, that, that's a pretty easy one. The additional one for Woodlawn might take some more investigation as to how many more lights would we need in that, that area.
We could handle them separately.
Those, those both could be separate, yes. If I heard your question right. Any other questions about the CIP budget? Not, Mayor?
Thank you very much. Okay, looking for a motion to move forward with the capital improvement program? Alderperson Regan, Alderperson Fulop?
Motion by Alderperson Regan, seconded by Alderperson Fulop, approving the twenty-twenty-five through twenty-twenty-nine CIP budget.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Foes no. Motion carried. For adjournment, Alderperson Savage, Alderperson Fulop?
Motion by Alderperson Savage, seconded by Alderperson Fulop, to adjourn at seven-thirty-two P.M.
For adjournment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Foes no. We stand adjourned. Thank you.